Do you have the stuff for Secretary Judy's? Or is it with Ed?
Well, this is Ed's packet. His name has the attendance sheet. And hopefully he'll be here to do what his normal task is.
No, he's telling that you're going to be doing it.
You want me to do it? The attendance? Is that what you're saying?
I think that's what he was getting at.
Yeah, you can.
Okay. Thank you for making that clear.
Well, I wasn't sure if you had already been assigned.
No. I thought Ed was going to do it.
I'll give him another minute.
This is not on.
Is it on?
Hold it down.
Just do a swap?
Yeah. Hot swap.
I might just give him a couple more seconds.
You just keep it down. Hold it down, it goes on.
We've got enough anyway.
Yeah, I know. He's just waiting. He's the secretary. I think he still is, yeah.
Yes, he is.
No?
He's pretty good. So if he comes, his microphone is like, gonna get it to work.
All right, we'll get going. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the City of Nashville Planning Board for March 8th, 2018. Mr. Peterson, could you call the roll?
Attendance: Mayor Donches, Steve Ducrent.
Present.
Myself, Dan Kelly, Scott Leclair.
Here.
Dave Robbins, Adam Varley.
Here.
Jerry Rapucci, Edward Weber, Maggie Harper.
Here.
Alderman David Tenza. Alderman Mary Ann Malitzegolia. That's it.
Okay, thanks. Seeing that we have a couple of regular members missing, Ms. Harper, you'd be participating in voting.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. So we have in front of us the minutes from the February 15th, 2018 Planning Board meeting. Has anybody had a chance to look at those? Have any changes they're looking for or make a motion that they're okay?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Mr. Ducrent to approve them as written. Second?
I second that.
Second from Ms. Harper. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Abstentions? Mr. Varley? Got that mic on there? You want to just record on Ed's packet there? There's a place to record the motions. Who made it and then the result of it.
Yes, approval of the minutes.
Yes, so it's one, two, three, four, five.
Five.
Approving one abstention, zero against. Okay, communications. We don't have Mr. Weber or Mr. Kelly. Anybody? So Roger?
Well, I can go over your packet. You have one item in your packet tonight, and it's just a notice of every year of the office, the state office of, I call it planning, it's now called strategic issues, but hold an annual Planning and Zoning Board Workshop on a Saturday. And this year it's in Concord. And if anyone wants to go to that or register to go to that, the city will pay for your registration. And we don't pay for mileage or travel, but you can either go online if you want to go and register, have them invoice the city, and send something to me. So I know that, I think you got an email from Chris Weber recently.
We did.
Yeah.
So I won't go into any further detail on that then, but the process is highlighted there. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I'm gonna go ahead and go into the executive session here. I'm gonna go ahead and waive the, unless anybody has any issues, the procedure of the meeting, we just have the applicant, I believe, and no members of the public. Anybody have any issues with that?
No.
No? Okay. So that being said, we'll go down through the list here. Old business, conditional, special, use permits, none. Old business subdivision plans, none. Old business site plans. Case number one, Dianne Gimber and Bishop Real Estate Management, Inc. That one has been tabled to an uncertain date. What's the, we'll keep moving on to new business, conditional, special, use permits, none. New business subdivision plans, none. New business site plans, case number two. This is John J. Flatley Company owner, application and acceptance of proposed one-year extension for site plan amendment to NR 2165 to construct 39,300 square foot flexible space. Property is at 100 to 300 Innovative Way, zoned PI and RC in Ward Eight. Can I have a motion or would someone like to make a motion that this application is ready for the board to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Peterson. Any second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Varley. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? All right, thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it. My name is Kevin Walker. I'm with the John Flatley Company in Braintree, Mass. We're here just to request an extension for one year on the approved site plan that includes three warehouse flex buildings. One here, 12,000 square feet. One here, 16,800. And one here, 10,500. There are no plan changes. We just haven't had an opportunity to get out there and get started yet. We are currently getting proposals to begin. Not sure if that's gonna start in a couple of months or maybe later in the summer. I'm not 100% sure of the exact start date. Just to give you an overview of where that is, you can look on this board here. This is the significant weight buildings, 100, 200, 300, there are comments out here. We're talking about this area here. This is the homeless suites. To give you an overall idea of where this project is.
Yep. Okay.
Again, there's, there are no changes to the plan. It's just a pretty straightforward request to extend the approval for. Take any questions if anybody.
Okay, you're still okay with all the previous stipulations as they were written? Yeah? Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Alderman Tenza?
Thank you. Sir, so I have questions, and it's not that I don't, I just worked the board the last time, but I wasn't here. So I just had questions about the type of warehouse space that.
Alderman Tenza, do you have a microphone? Yeah, go ahead and grab that one.
This one doesn't work.
Oh, just pass it over to me.
Thank you. So you said a warehouse flex space? And so what type of warehouse space do you envision?
So.
If I get, sorry. Is it for storage or is it for industrial use?
It would be more for small, small, small industrial, small manufacturing, that type of, that type of use. So the 12,000 square foot building, which is here, we currently have that broken out and architectural plans done for five units, so the 2,400 square foot units. Front will be a little office, the back will be warehouse and storage. This building here, 16,800, again, they're 2,400 square foot units, seven units. And the 10,500 over here, those are five units at 2,100 square feet. If we have a user that wants to use the whole thing, we don't put the walls up. If somebody wants twice the space, you know, they get two pods versus the one.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, just as a follow-up.
Sure.
So my concern would be the trucks going in and out of that, that space. Has there, has that been factored into the roadways and the traffic, especially down there on Spitbrook Road?
Yeah, so everything is designed for a larger truck, but with, the purpose of these flex spaces is to keep these pods on a smaller size. You know, even, even 16,000 square feet isn't really big enough for a full-blown warehouse. So what we expect are UPS-type trucks or plumbing supply company to drop something off, that type of thing. This loading area here is designed to be able to handle a larger truck, but it's not expected. It was designed, if once in a great while there is a larger truck, to be able to handle it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
I have one.
Ms. Harper?
I'm just curious what measures or where the Flatley Company is at as far as traffic on Spitbrook and with, you know, possible future development besides this development. Where are you at?
That's a great question.
Thank you.
And we are a little deeper than knee-deep into it at this point. We have been working with our traffic consultant, VHB, and we're working on a few things, working with them on a few things. One is to get, hopefully, a ramp off of the highway. We would see it here, but it'd be more of the harness. As part of that, improvements would include improvements to Spitbrook Road, which we've got two scopes on that one, which we're gonna be speaking with New Hampshire DOT on. So let me explain, with DOT, in order to get a ramp, they want you to exhaust everything. Why do you need this ramp? What can you do to Spitbrook Road? So we've looked at Spitbrook Road, we can, we know it with our eyes closed at this point. But then they say, well, what can you do with these ramps? The highway ramps? And we have some improvements to the highway ramps that are proposed.
So are you saying you'd have to make those improvements before they allow you to go further?
So the first step might be, well, we gotta do these improvements to Spitbrook Road, and that would add enough traffic capacity to do whatever, whatever it might be. Maybe it's a warehouse, maybe it's, I don't know what. The next one is do these improvements to the ramps. Okay, we do the improvements to the ramps. The last step would be the highway ramp. And it could go vice versa. If we got a huge building that we need to put in the northern 150 acres, maybe that ramp comes sooner rather than later. But my guess is that the Spitbrook Road improvements would need to be done, which they're not finalized, but we've got two different phases on that one. Possibly the ramp improvements, which would be adding a lane, and then the highway ramp.
So is there a timeline for the Spitbrook Road improvements?
There's no timeline yet. It's really gonna depend on what gets constructed out there. Any residential that gets built out there is off-peak. That doesn't bring people in in the morning and leaving at night. It's opposite. So any residential that happens out there, the improvements aren't going to be necessary at this point. If we do something like 150,000 square foot office building with, you know, that's quite a bit of vehicle traffic, that's gonna require some improvements before anything gets going. Probably, and I'm just guessing on this, probably just the Spitbrook Road improvements at this point. Not necessarily a ramp. But anything large, I mean, something small like what we have here, there's, there's really no traffic impact. Something larger like 150,000 square foot office-type building would be enough of a project to impact Spitbrook Road to require some improvements on.
Okay.
So we'd run that through, we're gonna run that through New Hampshire DOT. We're also, once they're okay with it, we're gonna run it through the city. The city's gonna be a big part of it, with the plan and department, community development, engineering, the whole shoot and match, so. We're gonna be one big happy family, I'm hoping, with the city and really attack this whole thing with everybody on the same page moving forward.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Any questions for staff? Okay. Hearing none at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and take this into the public meeting. Thanks. So we've seen this one before, looking to extend it a year, a little bit of discussion on the traffic that comes up pretty much when, I think it came up even on the original, when folks were talking about it. So this one's sort of been in the queue for a little bit. Anybody have any discussion points or questions?
Yeah, I would just say on the traffic, we have, you know, obviously that's been a common question that we've asked of them when they've come before us on different projects. And, you know, we have this project that's been on our agenda for a long time, the R&amp;D facility, so.
Right.
I would imagine anytime a project like that, of that size comes before us, that's when we're gonna, you know, be talking in a lot more detail about where the, where the traffic lands are.
Right. Any other comments? No? Anybody willing to make a motion?
Make a motion?
Mr. Varley?
Motion to approve new business case number two, site plan one-year extension. Owner, John J. Flatley Company, proposed one-year extension of site plan amendment to NR 2165 to add 39,300 square foot flexible space consisting of three new buildings. Finding the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan, NR Section 190-146D, with a single stipulation indicating that all prior conditions of approval are incorporated and made a part of this plan unless otherwise determined by the planning board.
So we have a motion to approve new business case number two, in accordance with Mr. Varley's motion. You wanna second it?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? No? Motion passes. Thanks a lot. So that's six, zero. Bye. Okay. So we have new business case number three, that's also postponed at this point to March 29th. Other business case number one, review of tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. You had agenda in your packet, did anybody have a chance to look at it and see if there's anything on there?
I've looked at it. I have a few minor comments.
Okay.
Shall I proceed?
Sure.
On the?
On the, on the technical review?
Are you talking about capital improvements?
I'm getting ahead of it.
Okay, yeah, right now we're on the technical tentative agenda at this point, so if anybody had a chance to review or want to make a motion.
Steve keeps distracting me.
Where is?
This is where we are. Okay, I hear you.
Where's Long Avenue and Dawn Street? I just don't know where that is.
Long? I know where that is.
Well, Short is right off of Broad Street.
Roger, you know where that is?
So Long's probably there, too.
Long Avenue and Dawn.
Long's next to it.
Directly next to the Gulf Station by exit six?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And off of Pine Hill Road.
Short's over there.
Well, in that case, if, I would be happy to make a motion that having reviewed the tentative agenda, I've determined there are no proposals of regional impact.
All right, so we have a motion that there are no proposals of regional impact for Mr. Varley. Second on that?
I second it.
Second by Ms. Harper. Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes. All right. Now, other business case number two, referral of FY 2019 Capital Improvements Program from the Capital Improvements Committee to us. Roger, you gonna talk on that first?
Yes, I can, Mr. Chair. In the absence of Dan Kelly, who is the chair of the committee. Mr. Kelly did, and I'm sure you had a chance to review this document, he wrote a rather lengthy page and a half letter, you know, concerning the projects. There's four major groupings of project, A projects, B projects, and C and D projects. And there's also other which aren't considered capital projects. If you would like me to read his letter, I can do that. I think you probably all reviewed it.
Yeah, I don't think we need you to read it unless, you know, anybody has any questions on it, maybe they can.
New to this year, and he's attached, he referenced a memo from, to him, from the mayor concerning the capital improvement and what his general priorities were for this fiscal year 2019. And that weighed on the committee's minds when we reviewed the projects, as well as the committee had asked each of the divisions or departments to provide their highest priority or priorities, and the committee looked at that as well.
I just have a general question. So is it correct that all of these, all of the projects and all of the numbers, dollar numbers associated with them are directly from the relevant department?
That's correct. Those are estimates that the committee was given by the respective division or department.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
Oh, no, I just have my hand right here.
Oh, yeah, I didn't know, did you have any questions or comments on the CIC?
Well, I do have some minor ones.
Okay.
In the very beginning, page one, in the first paragraph, they have the word cities. It should be like city apostrophe S showing possession rather than plural for cities. That's minor, but it's just, somebody just worded it differently. The other thing on page two, right up front, another minor mistake, somebody wrote $340 million when it should have been 340,000.
Repudiate?
For the sidewalk repairs, page two, right up in the beginning.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Deferable D projects, in it, they wrote a dollar figure, but they added three extra zeros.
We asked to determine those are gonna be solid gold sidewalks.
The yellow brick road.
And that's why it was deferred. Are these the new heated sidewalks where you don't have to plow?
I think 3.4 million.
They're heated. All that glitters is gold.
Okay. Well, I think you, Roger, you can just pass that along.
I'll pass that. This is Dan's letter and.
Yeah, this isn't really part of the.
This is.
Dan's gonna get a B reading on his letter.
I have a couple other minor things. If you go further in to the next page one. Hang on. Should that be Linda Panny or Linda McGee?
It's McGee.
So that, we need to update her name?
Her name was changed, yeah. We can change that, yes.
Then the, just proving that I read this. And then the other thing is page 10, further in. The project are listed with B desirable, B1, B2, B3, followed by B3. I think that final one should be B4.
Not necessarily. You can have, in that case, and we'll double-check that for you. Project got the same point tally when all the committee members voted, then it would be the same. For instance, if they got, and I don't have my tally sheet with me, they each got 23 points, they'd both be B3 projects.
Right. Yeah, like there's two A1s, yeah.
Like, in the next page, you have C1, C2, C... Sometimes it works out that you have several A1s, you have several D.
Could very well be the case. I appreciate the clarification.
We will.
I'm the, just a follow-up question on the Elma Street Middle School renovation, though. Is that $500,000, is that right?
On what page?
The same.
Page 10.
The one Mike was just referring to, B3, the second B3, Elma Street.
Renovations for the Elma Street Middle School.
$500,000 just seems really low.
It is. That's architectural and engineering only. And to look at options, as no building or no construction, that's just.
Okay.
A and E.
Yeah, 'cause the description is just, you know, this.
Yeah, that might cover, like.
All of these huge improvements that need to be done, so.
Yeah, it's a three-year project. It's a long-term project, and I believe the price tag, if you look at the back of the, it was over 60 million. If that helps.
Yeah. Any other comments?
Not for me. Perhaps Steve?
Yeah, maybe Roger can help me answer. From Mr. Kelly's letter, this first paragraph, he talks about, at the end of the paragraph, overlaid on all of the above is the CIC repair versus new criteria to all projects. Can you explain what he meant by that?
Where in his letter, Steve? I'm sorry?
The first paragraph.
First paragraph, last.
First, okay.
First.
I was on the second page, sorry. Last paragraph. There are a lot of deferred, by repair, he means, there's a lot of deferred projects like the school department, the fire department, that are big items like boiler replacements, things like that, that are part of what he would call repair, deferred items. They're maintenance items, but they're big-ticket maintenance items. And those, that's what he means by that. A new project would be building a new addition to a school, a new building.
Okay, yeah. Well, was he saying that the CIC gave preference to the repair versus new?
I don't think so. I don't think any of the members.
See, I see that pretty much in the short-term projects. If you look at the As in the short-term projects, it looks like there was a lot of maintenance type, ones that got the A rating.
The committee doesn't look at whether it's a repair or specifically, what he's pointing out here generally is, they're generally speaking, repair versus new type of projects. And you have to repair certain things. You got a boiler in the school, it's gotta be repaired, otherwise you don't have heat in the school, or HVAC, air conditioning, that sort of thing. Those are, you know, and so the committee has to weigh each of the projects when we look at them as to their priority rating, or what each committee member feels it should be their priority rating.
Another question is, how close do you think the committee came to addressing the mayor's priorities? Because he's the guy holding the money.
Well, that's, that's, that's an opinion-type of question, Steve. I'm not sure I am able to answer that collectively for the committee. I think the committee collectively tried to, we had this memo in the back of our minds when we did our ratings.
Yeah.
I know I did, but I can't tell you what every member thought when they did it, or when they made their ratings. I see. Okay. That's all I have.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so what we're looking for is a referral, either in the, you know, a positive referral or negative. Somebody wanna make a motion for that?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion for a positive referral of the, I'm trying to use the exact wording of the.
Yeah, 2019.
2019 Capital Improvements.
Program.
Program, long-term and short-term projects.
Okay, so we have a motion to, for a positive referral from Alderman Tenza. Does anybody have a second to that?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Varley. Second from Mr. Varley. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. So six-zero, motion passes. So that is the end of our items here. Anybody have any discussion items? Roger, you wanted to mention?
Yes, Scott and I talked earlier. I know the board wanted a workshop. We normally have one scheduled, normally for your second, between your first and second meetings in May that week. And we're looking at May tenth possibly. That's a Thursday night, so it's in sync. The auditorium's open that night, as well as Tuesday night of that week. But, and we're looking for some ideas. I know the last couple of years, we've had an attorney from the New Hampshire Municipal Association come, and who specializes in doing presentations, you know, what are the board's roles and responsibilities under state law, and the right-to-know law, some of those issues. I think it might be good this year, maybe if we, I know there's some topics, and I, and I do know that Adam can probably chime in. We've had these discussions in the past about sidewalks, sidewalk waivers, landscaping, drainage. Some things have come up recently, I think, with the board, as to what information you need to make a decision on a subdivision or a site plan, and the reason why we have these ordinances, or why ordinances are there. And so, but there's other topics that the board may have, and if you could get those to us, I certainly would appreciate that, so we can prepare in advance for that meeting.
Get what to you?
Any topics that you would like, any areas that you would like further elaboration on, or that you feel you, you would need information on, or training on. I will provide you with the information that you got last year. I know it's kind of a repeat for the older members every year when we do the right-to-know and all this other stuff, but with, with the municipal association attorney. But this year, I think if we just provide you what they gave us last year, if you have any questions, you can ask us.
I think that would work. The one other item we had from the last couple of times around was the role of the city with regard to inspection of, of site plan, you know, construction. Maybe, maybe we can get some further clarifications on that kind of stuff.
Right. In particular, I think it's come up in the context of, we have a subdivision, and by ordinance, they're not, you know, the applicant is not expressly required to, you know, indicate where they're going to put, you know, a house on the property, what, you know, grading they're going to do on the property, and, and so dishes and raises, yeah, exactly what, you know, if, if we can't, you know, what is, sort of, what is the board's role in terms of, you know, developing that in more detail from the applicant, and sort of requiring more detail in that subdivision plan? And then if something goes wrong, what is, you know, what are the remedies for the city in terms of enforcement?
And private road construction, I think that was another subject that had come up.
Yeah, that's true.
In particular, Mr. Varley, what came up at the last meeting was, what's the city's role in, in making sure that construction on the private, not just the roadway, but on the private site is, is built to some standard quality?
I think it'd be helpful even to include the role on a commercial site as well, you know. I mean, just so you can see the difference, too. There, there's different roles, I think, from the city's role anyway. When we get a site, a commercial-type site plan, that's a little different, right? So maybe we could review those, those items.
Six-hour session, is that what you?
Probably two or three, no more than three, I would hope. If you start at seven and go to ten, that's, it's really up to the board how much time you want to spend on it.
Yeah, I think, like, usually we do two, right?
Usually two.
Two, I think.
Sometimes two and a half, depends.
Yeah, okay. All right, so if you have any other ideas, email them to Roger and myself.
Or, or get them to my staff. We'll.
Yeah.
We'll get them distributed.
Put something together. Okay, any other discussion items?
One, one quickly, Mr. Chair. You know, we had Mr. Walker here earlier, and we have on our schedule for, I guess, the next meeting, the R&amp;D facility.
Yep.
I'm not sure that's going to go then, because we were talking about the traffic impacts and so on, and the traffic.
That's why I brought it up.
Situation resolved regarding that?
We don't know if it's, it's scheduled on your agenda, but I'm not sure if it's, at this point, I assume it's going to go, but I'm not sure it is or not.
I would assume it's not.
I would assume it's not.
We'll know in a week, Steve, maybe two, before we publish it.
All right.
Okay. All right. Any other items? Anybody willing to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved to adjourn?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-six.
Lightning.
Nice.
Thank you for coming out on this evening.
No problem.
Braving the snowy. Thanks.